Please stand for the pledge. Angela, roll call please.
I am taking that back. Mayor Coleman?
Why?
Counselor Augsberger?
Present.
Counselor Bronson?
Present.
Counselor Hagy?
Present.
Counselor Richards?
Here.
Counselor Sanchez?
Here.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Present. Let the record show that we have seven present and zero absent. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Inside today's consent agenda are some committee appointments and a contract with intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Cascade West and some minutes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
I would like to request that we remove the request for council action committee and commission appointments as I have a potential conflict of interest because there's a relative that's within that. Can we vote on that one separately so I can abstain?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
So the remainder of the items that are in the consent agenda would be the intergovernmental agreement and the two minutes. I can entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, including the intergovernmental agreement and the two minutes. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven yeses and no nays to approve the consent agenda. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. The first thing underneath there is that if I were mayor, local contests winner winners, I think we're going to do this individually. So we'll start with Talison Miller. If you could please come forward, you are receiving a certificate and we had two students who participated in this activity and I just want to say thank you so much for the students and their efforts and their work in coming up with, there was one that was a poster, but Talison's was an essay. And so I just want to say great job. Thank you for participating it and you will receive the support. So get to sit in the chair for a moment. So come around.
No, this. This one right here. Yeah. Here's chair. Take off, she has a plaque.
Yeah.
Oh my God. That's so awesome.
So awesome.
There you go. This is for you. And then you can sit down here and you can call somebody out of order or you can, yeah, whatever you would like to do. Have a seat and you can use the gavel there. Okay. Go ahead.
I'm confused.
They made a plaque. You can make an announcement or you can close out the meeting or you can just smile for the picture.
Okay.
Well done. Good job. Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Very awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. The next student who is winning is Jacob Wheeler. If you could please come forward and you'll be able to do the same thing.
Okay. Jacob. We can get a picture of you. Let's get a little closer. Okay. There you go. Okay, look at us.
At the gavel.
Right?
The gavel.
Yeah, pick up the gavel.
Yes. Good job.
Awesome.
I am so grateful for students participating and being involved in their local governance and providing their ideas. So well done. Let's give them both another round of applause. Hey, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have a couple of proclamations. Proclamations for those that would like to know are just announcements and one has to do with April. And I'm hoping that people were able to participate in the child abuse awareness walk that happened earlier this month, but this is proclamation regarding that declaring April 2025 Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas children are valued in Lynn County and should live in a safe, healthy home, and whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community value that depends on the involvement of people community wide in order to provide access to the resources needed for safe, healthy living, and whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harms children, but also increases the likelihood of health problems, poor education, performance, substance abuse in early pregnancy, and whereas these problems can compound themselves as a child become an adult, as abuse and neglect are far reaching with no social economic group immune, and children are of all races and ethnicities are victims, making child abuse a total community problem affecting all levels of society, and whereas the prevention of child abuse needs to be addressed by the entire community. Now, therefore, I, Susan Coleman, mayor, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support children and their families in living safe and healthy lives, and in doing so, helping to prevent child abuse and neglect proclaimed this 22nd day of April 2025. And although that was for April, I just want to say that every month is a good month to stay aware of child abuse and the, and bring it to the police attention as our police department is aware of these things and works diligently to help those things. Next, I'm going to read National Day of Prayer proclamation for 2025, whereas throughout America's history, we have poured out our prayers to the God of hope in times of crisis and in celebration, in prosperity and in need, in times of war and in peace, we have poured out praise to God for all he is, thanks to God for all he has done, confession and pleas for forgiveness when we have parted from his word and will, and poured out intercession asking for his heart and hand to move for the sake of our neighbors and nation. And our history is filled with his grace, goodness, and abundant answers to those prayers. And whereas from the first prayer of our Continental Congress in 1774 to the opening of every session of the House of Representatives and Senate, and throughout hearts and homes across America, the practice of prayer continues to seek God for guidance, wisdom, power, protection, and provision that has preserved hope and united us as one nation under God. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is a public law established in the United States Congress in 1952, approved by a joint resolution, and amended by Congress and President Reagan with Public Law 100-307 in 1988, and reaffirmed by the Supreme Court in 2014, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray, and directs the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May every year as a National Day of Prayer, and whereas in our city and across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, with the theme Pour Out to God of Hope and Be Filled, based on the verse of Romans 15:13, that is both a prayer and a promise. Now may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace and believing so that you will abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit. Now therefore, I, Susan Coleman, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2025, as a day of prayer throughout our city, and I commend this observance to our citizens and request that prayers be poured out for our city, for our neighbors, as we live, serve, work, and learn together, that we may be filled with all joy and peace and abound in hope proclaimed this 13th day, this 22nd day of April 2025. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is where is new business. We're going to pull down the request for council action committee and commission appointments first. So that is in your packet and it is reviewing and suggesting the budget committee, the Bob Brianna, Don Miller, Gianna Dahl, and planning commission, Branding Weiss on Frick.
So moved as recommended.
Oh, second tap.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger, if you'd like to abstain?
Abstain.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six yeses and one abstention. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the request for council action Willow Yucca Local Improvement District Engineering Change Order.
Um, excuse me. Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. So this evening I am presenting an RCA to approve a change order in the amount of $83,664 for the Willow Yucca Local Improvement District. So I'll explain why here in a minute, but a little history and background on this, just to kind of bring us up to speed, is in December 2019, area residents petitioned the city to form a local improvement district, bring water service, and improve street infrastructure to the neighborhood. After a public hearing and further investigation into cost-saving options, council formally approved the LID and established it via ordinance number 1297 in June of 2021. And then in August 2023, council authorized a loan of just over $2 million through the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority to support the project. And then last year in September, during the 65% design review meeting with Civil West Engineering, new staff had identified a critical conflict between the storm drain and the sanitary sewer system along 18th Avenue. And so that is the reason why we're coming back to you is for that issue at hand. So the design conflict is actually pretty significant. It was brought to our attention that if it's left unresolved, connecting additional homes into the system would increase the risk of overflows, posing a threat not only to nearby properties, but also to the adjacent South Saniam River. So Civil West, we had them look at it. They submitted a change order in the amount of $83,664 to revise the plans to resolve the issue. So the revised scope, it includes a new outlet structure and storm system adjustments to eliminate the conflict and also to ensure long-term service that's quality for that area. And it would delay the project about six months. In talking with councilors, I know there's some concerns about additional costs to residents. So I did a little bit of research here. We understand those concerns. And here's what we know at this point. So the engineering change order itself does not directly increase residents' costs. However, it does, as you can imagine, it would signal changes to the construction scope that might lead to overall higher project costs. So by law, the terms of the loan require costs to be passed on to the residents. So we've explored some ways to offset those costs. So using SDCs or system development charges to offset those and also readjusting the loan amount for the same interest rate. So anyway, just so council knows that it, staff's goal is to minimize any financial impact to the residents wherever possible. Whatever the re-engineered difference is, obviously, we don't know that right now, but whatever that is, we anticipate being able to use SDCs to offset the costs so that there's not a higher rate to the residents. So I just want you to know that staff shares the same commitment to making sure residents are not asked to shoulder more than necessary. And the change order allows us to proactively plan for those risks and adjust the scope reasonably now. So with that, with a little bit of the history and the issue in front of you, based on the research that we did there, we're recommending option two to approve the change order as proposed. However, at this time, we want to open it up for council to discuss or ask any questions that they might have.
Any questions to councilors?
Madam Mayor, may I? So I appreciate all of that information. Not to beat a dead horse, but I want to go on the record again. I'm very concerned about what type of cost we're going to run into once we finally get the contract finalized. I don't believe that the $2.3 million will be enough because this has been going on for the last five years. If we see the wastewater treatment plant skyrocket, I'm assuming this is going to skyrocket, and I just don't know how we can mandate a repayment by the residents because some can and some cannot, and then expect us to approve an unknown amount. So I will be a no on this.
Any other discussion from council?
Madam Mayor, I think infrastructure should be our number one issue. So I'm going to vote yes on this.
Any other discussion of councilors or questions regarding Lids? Lids are very unique scenarios where residents have requested improvement in their area. And do any new councilors need any clarification on that? If not, we can entertain a motion.
So moved as recommended.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor, I'm sorry, President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counsel Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Let the record show that we have six ayes and one no to approve the Willow Yucca LID change order. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the request for council action resolution number nine for 2025.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, thank you again. So tonight, we're, staff is presenting the RCA regarding resolution number nine for 2025. So this resolution proposes the formal adoption of the city council goals for the fiscal year 2025 and 2026. And I just want to thank council for all of the hard work that went into goal setting this year. Staff really appreciates that and appreciates just the clarity of where, you know, you want the city to go over this next year. I'm just going to review the goals that we have here. So this year's proposed goals fall into five strategic focus areas, efficient government. Under that was improve electronic communications to residents, conduct cybersecurity review of key infrastructure. Under economic strength, we had a support redevelopment of the Saniam Feed Store property, and then also to evaluate and advance potential future uses of the old City Hall building and to figure out what we're going to do with that in the future. And then under essential services, beginning construction of the wastewater treatment plant, phase one, complete design and begin construction of the Mountain View multi-use path sidewalks. And the last one under that category is to evaluate and advance a street repair and preservation strategy. Under infrastructure, renovate the east wing of City Hall for CSC to begin leasing that and occupying that to bring resources to the community, as well as complete technology upgrades at the library. And then under desirable community, preserve and enhance Weddell Bridge and then continue efforts to reduce downtown commercial vacancies. So those are the goals. There is a special note, as you will see in your council packet regarding the paving program. There was a lot of interest in that. Staff actually also has an interest in the paving program, and it was one of the most discussed items this year for our goal setting. So I just want council to know that we have taken it seriously. We ended up reaching out to about 52 jurisdictions across the state. We ended up paring back from 21, maybe even more at this point. And what we learned that while a full in-house paving program is attractive in theory, it's, we just can't financially or operationally maintain that at this time. So the combined costs of the additional personnel, the personnel was really the biggest cost. The equipment and seasonal limitations would overwhelm our current transportation fund. So what we learned was that most cities our size contract out paving or have reduced their in-house efforts to do so to, to cost and staffing challenges. So with that in there, we have, you know, we wanted to give you an alternative for the full in-house paving program, and that was a pavement preservation program instead. So this would allow us to focus on sealing, patching, and preserving 65% of our streets that are currently in fair to good condition. So it extends the life of our network. It delivers more visible progress and buys us some time to explore cost sharing rentals, grant funding that could support a larger scale effort in the future. So, you know, with that being said, it doesn't, the recommendation doesn't abandon the goal. It just kind of shifts it to something that we feel like we can achieve for council over this next year and fulfill your vision for that. So with that being said, obviously, staff recommends option two to amend the goals to adopt the pavement preservation program in lieu of a full paving program. But with that being said, I want to open it up for council discussion. And we're happy to take any questions.
Any discussion of council?
Madam Mayor, may I? Okay, so this is my favorite thing. And I'm really thankful that Cecily put all the effort into the work that you presented to us tonight to see if we could align. And I'm very happy with the compromise because it's better than what we were doing. I had a lot of struggle going over this over the weekend because I felt somewhat defeated because I wasn't ever intending that we buy a new paver or that we buy a new dump truck because we can, we can, that, that's, we'll never be able to afford that. My intention was a used paver for light overlays, and what you guys have come up with is the crack ceiling and the preservation. And so that little bite of this means a lot to me personally. And so I'm very thankful. But the dowels is doing that currently, and I would love to get connected with them more to figure out how maybe over the course of five-year pilot program like Lynn County suggested, because 13 out of 20 of these do have a program. And with the amount of taxes that are coming down the pipe with the ODOT transportation, $1.8 billion annually needed, these costs are going to spiral out of control. And so we have to do some cost avoidance measures. And so that's all that I was hoping that we could do. And so today, we have lighted crosswalks, and we have a pavement preservation plan, and Garth has been helping us with the updated transportation plan, and we have a connection with ODOT. And all of these infrastructure road things are going so beautifully. I'm, I'm just so happy. So thank you. Still want to work on a paver, but we got five years, I hope, to figure it out.
Cecily, I do want to say something about the fact that you reach out to so many cities. I was really impressed, surprised by the number that we returned your phone call and gave all of the data they did. It was very helpful to review that and to see that so many of them, even with their program that they have, they, they're contracting a lot of work out. Was, that was really interesting. And then some of those cities, the way that they're affording it is their own local gas tax. So, but I think the effort that you guys did to come up with the compromise was exceptional. So thank you for doing that. Any other questions or comments, councilors?
Yes. Madam Mayor, yeah, I really appreciate the amount of effort that you as a team put in the research in this and really getting to the base and coming back with options for us. And your recommendation, I strongly support that. I think that that's where my vote is. That's the best bang for our buck and use of the limited funds that we have. So thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion to accept option two to amend the goals to adopt a pavement preservation program in lieu of a paving program?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of councilors? Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Let the record show that we have seven yeses and no nays to approve council goals for 2025, 2026. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, request for council action ordinance number two for 2025.
Madam Mayor, I will hand that over to City Attorney Larson.
Thank you. So we had this on the agenda a couple, what, month or a couple of months ago, actually. And the desire at that time was to work with CIS, our insurer, to take another look at the ordinance and make sure that it was current with some of the work that they've been doing. So since that time, I did talk to CIS, I talked to one of the attorneys that they have. He, I'm blanking on his name for the moment, but he's one of the primary attorneys that has been working on issues with the city and southern south coast. Grants pass. Thank you. And they've been kind of at the forefront of most of this. And, and so he was very well versed in the way the legal landscape has shifted in the last year and continues to shift. And so we went over the ordinance. Most of it was in great shape as it was. There were some, some tweaks that he recommended that we make. And so the one before you is a modified version. Essentially, the major changes, and none of the changes were major, they were fairly minor, but they served to kind of protect us from areas where the, the important thing is that we don't want to establish a sanctioned camp site with it on city property. And so defining those terms and making sure that that is clear in the ordinance of how that's defined was really the crucial point because you need to essentially assure, ensure that any of the activities that you're looking at for determining whether something counts as a camping site, also don't include any activities that people would normally do in public parks and other public property. And so it's, it's really defining that in a way that it shows the intention of the person setting up that camp that they intend to rest for and sleep and live for a period of time. So those, those adjustments have been made to the ordinance. Prior to this coming before you, we did not have an ordinance that really looked at these things despite a state requirement that we do need to have a policy in this area. And we have actively been working to serve our unsheltered population and provide them with resources. The, the practice is to direct them to FAC as much as possible, and then when that's not an option, to offer behind the police station as a, as another site where people may rest. And, and so that practice has been in place. What this ordinance does is essentially make that practice more defensible and gives our officers a better backing when they are serving people and then helping them find the right place to get resources and rest. And that being said, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions from councilors? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved as recommended.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two for 2025. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, may I? So I appreciate all the work that you've done on this, Blair, and thank you for going to CIS to clarify if this was protecting us. I still am on the fence. I feel like the policy that's in place is sufficient and I'm I feel like the policy that's in place is sufficient, and I'm cautious about including an ordinance, so I will be a no, but thank you for taking it to them.
Any other comments or questions of councilors or discussion? Cecily, please call for a vote.
President Pro Tem Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagie?
Yes.
Counselor Richards? Counselor Sanchez?
No. Let the record show that we have five yeses and two nos to approve ordinance number two for 2025. Does that mean we need to conduct a first reading of this ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, public hearing for legislative amendment LA 25-01 and request-
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Typically, at the end of a, after we've read an ordinance, there's a vote regarding how scheduling the second reading of the ordinance at the next meeting?
Correct, for the next meeting, yes. So we need to entertain a motion regarding the reading of the second, for the second time at our next council meeting, which would be May 13th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
I have a motion and a second to have the second reading of ordinance number two at the May 13th meeting. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagie?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
President Pro Tem Thorstedt?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have six ayes and no, one nay regarding the second reading. Moving on now, thank you, City Attorney Larson. Public hearing for legislative amendment LA 25-01 and request for council action. I will open the public hearing up at 7:09 PM. And I will read the disclosure statement, ORS 197.763. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have a question, please wait until appropriate time, then direct your questions to the council. Please speak one at a time so the recorder knows who is speaking. Declarations by city council. Personal bias is the prejudice or prejudgment of the facts to such a degree that an official is incapable of making an objective decision based on the merits of the case. Conflict of interest has any member of the council or their immediate family have any financial or other interests in the application that has to be disclosed? Ex parte information, the council is bound to base their decision on information received in the public hearing and what is presented in testimony. If a member of the council has taken, talked with an applicant or has information from outside the public hearing, it needs to be shared at that time so that everyone in the audience has an opportunity to be aware of it and the rest of the council is aware of it. In that way, it can be rebutted and can be discussed openly. I'm now going to ask each counselor if they have personal bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte information. Need to disclose one if they have one of the three. Counselor Richards, do you have personal bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte information?
None.
Counselor Bronson?
No.
Counselor Augsberger?
No.
Deb?
No.
Counselor Sanchez?
Is it personal bias for liking the transportation? I don't know. No.
Counselor Hagie?
No.
And I, I do not either. Okay, we're ready for a staff report.
Madam Mayor, I will hand this over to Angela Clay.
Good evening. Legislative amendment LA 25-01 is broken up into two ordinances. We will first present ordinance number three for 2025, which includes the 2025 Transportation System Plan and related text amendments to Chapter Six of the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan. These proposed amendments were developed by our consultants using data and feedback from the Technical Advisory Committee, which is the TAC, Public Advisory Committee, which is the PAC, City Staff and Planning Commission. The 2025 Sweet Home TSP outlines both current and long-term strategies for managing and improving the city's transportation network, developed in collaboration with city staff, key stakeholders, and community members. The plan reflects thorough research, technical analysis, and public input. The intent is to formally incorporate the TSP as an amendment and a sub-element of the existing comprehensive plan. The 2010 Comprehensive Plan sets out transportation-related goals consistent with the Oregon statewide planning goal 12, which is transportation goal, while also addressing local priorities such as balancing future development with an accessible multimodal transportation system. The 2025 TSP aligns with those goals and expands on them by providing specific recommendations and improvement projects to guide future decision-making. Excuse me. This updated TSP is proposed to replace the 2005 Transportation System Plan and will serve as contextual and guiding document with, within the comprehensive plan. It includes approval criteria and findings of compliance that support its adoption under the Type IV legislative procedure. As detailed in the legislative findings included in your packet, staff has determined that the 2025 TSP complies with the Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.116.030, as well as Chapters 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 of the Oregon State Planning Goals. Goals 3, 4, 8, and 15 through 19 were found to not be applicable. On April 3rd, 2025, the Sweet Home Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted to recommend adoption of the TSP to the city council. Based on the legislative findings and the Planning Commission's recommendations, staff recommends that the city council approve legislative amendment LA 25-01, thereby adopting the TS, 2025 TSP, and proceed with the first reading of the ordinance number three for 2025. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to our consultant, Garth Aponitis of DKS Associates, who will provide a brief presentation. And I think as long as we haven't dropped them again, we have Andrew Parrish from MIG and Michael Duncan from ODOT joining us online. They're also our consultants. And then following the presentation, we'll open up the floor for questions from council. Turn it over to Garth.
All right. Thank you, Angela. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Or excuse me, good evening. Feels like morning, huh? I, I just had a bunch of coffee, so it feels like morning. It feels like a great morning. Adam, I'm not sure that I'm able to present, so if you can pull up the slides if, or if the slides aren't accessible, we can get by without them too. They're, they're just pretty high level. Okay. They ready for a good morning too, I hope? Perfect. All right. So as, as Angela noted, I've just got a few slides here, very high level. I know that there's quite a bit of information in the packet, and we'll certainly be help, happy to answer any questions you may have. Adam, if you can go ahead, just a couple slides. So as, as Angela was mentioning, there's two projects or two endeavors we're going to be talking about tonight. They've both been conducted in tandem over the last couple of years. They're, they're both distinct and different, and I'll be talking a little about that, but they're also intertwined. They're both looking forward to the future of Sweet Home and looking at the opportunities and how we want to plan out the system and the opportunities for transportation improvements in the system. So first, we're going to be focusing on the Transportation System Plan. Angela mentioned a few of these things, but the, the, the really important thing is it's, it serves as the master plan for the transportation system for the city. From a planning perspective, we look out 20 years. We're thinking about the future growth and the future needs of the city. Coincidentally, the last plan was done 20 years ago. But they can be updated more frequently than that. Usually, that doesn't need to be any more than every seven to 10 years, but certainly situations can change. You know, if there's unforeseen circumstances that arise or new opportunities that arise, you might want to revisit the plan in the future. But right now, we've really taken a look at the current needs of Sweet Home and looking ahead to what we think the needs are going to kind of roll out over the next 20 years as the city continues to grow. The, the TSP is a citywide, a citywide document. We're focused on all the area within the urban growth boundary and looking towards that growth. And, and probably one of the most important opportunities or one of the most important takeaways from a transportation system plan is the project list. And it includes a project list that identifies that these are projects or improvements or opportunities that as a community you recognize and would like to, as the opportunity arises, would like to implement. Now, we know that, that the needs and the ideas are beyond what is currently feasible based on existing funding, but it's really important that those projects and needs are depicted in this plan because whether it's a grant application or other funding opportunity, almost, almost always, the first question is, is this project in your plan? Is this project consistent with your plan? And so by having the plan with all these great ideas, even if some may be beyond the means that we think are currently feasible to be funded, it's a really important step for that. I'll talk about the North Sweet Home area a little bit later, but for now, focus on the TSP. So Adam, if you can go to the next one, please. So the Transportation System Plan, again, it provides benefit to the city because it's your, it serves as your master plan or your guide for transportation. But it is, I just want to recognize too that it is also required. Is, is, in, in Oregon, it's, it's required for cities of this size. It, it, it's the long-range plan for all the, the travel modes. As, as part of this, we've looked through and done inventories and look, think, thought about the needs for people walking, pedestrians in the city, people biking, people driving, all, all those kind of things. Let's go to the next slide, Adam. So maybe just a, a really high-level overview of what is, what is in the plan. So one of the chapters in there, it talks about transportation goals and policies that kind of expands beyond what, what the, the prior transportation goal was that the city had, which was primarily maintenance-focused, maintenance, maintaining the system. So this, so the new goals expand on that a bit. As I noted, it identifies both the current and the long-term 20-year needs for the system to address those needs. And then with, within the projects, two different terms that are really important. There's, again, a lot of projects in there. One of the components that it's required to have, going back to the state requirements, is there's a financially constrained project list. What do we think is generally feasible over the next 20 years based on the current funding streams? That is a very small slice of the pie among all the ideas and what the city aspires to. And that's common with communities all around the state. That's not unique to Sweet Home. That's not unique to Sweet Home. So it's important to note that financially constrained project list is what we think is most likely to be achieved, and then the aspirational project list is basically all the other ideas. And all those ideas, while we might not think that there's currently money available to fund them, those are the kind of things that if you hear about a grant opportunity or packaging in a transportation project with another infrastructure project, that's the list of ideas you can go to. One of the other key items in the Transportation System Plan is it includes some standards for the system, which include a functional classification. The functional classification is important because it essentially, it says what the type of streets are, and then that dictates some of the other design criteria, like what are the, what's the spacing of intersections on those streets? What are the lane widths and other criteria on those streets? So that's really important. And then there's also mobility standards, which is basically how much congestion or delay can occur before something has to be done. And that's really important going through a development review process, and that's something that Planning Commission would deal with on a pretty frequent basis. So that is a very quick, very high-level summary of what's in the plan. Again, this is something we've been working on the last couple of years, and I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Counselors, have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you so much for all the effort you've done for the city of Sweet Home with this updated transportation plan and everybody else. I had been told multiple times that this was a barrier to getting grant funding and having ODOT come to our table because it wasn't updated. And so now, all the stars have aligned and we're going to keep moving forward, so thank you.
The next item in this public hearing is testimony. Testimony in favor? Anybody want to come forward with testimony in favor? I think Counselor Sanchez was testimony in favor, which is just fine.
A million times.
Next item is testimony in opposition. Do we have anybody who is here to provide testimony in opposition? Neutral testimony. Testimony from those that are neither in favor nor in opposition to the application. Hearing none. I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:22 PM. Now, we can have discussion as counsel. We can ask further questions if we would like, and I can entertain a motion.
Adam Mayor, may I ask another question? Well, okay. So now that we have, like you said, Pleasant Valley Road and Highway 20 as number one in both tables, does that actually mean it's the top priority?
So that's a great question. So I'd say number one, interest and concerns about that intersection, Pleasant Valley at Main Street or Highway 20, is something that very clearly we've heard throughout the process, there's a lot of interest in. So I can say from what we've heard anecdotally, from comments and discussions of the process, we've heard a lot of interest in the community. As far as priority goes, then it's, as you noted, it's a project that, because of the interest and the concern about it, it is within that financially constrained project list. Being within that financially constrained project list doesn't necessarily hold the city, that the city has to build any kind of project at any kind of timeline. I mean, the general expectation is, as these funds become available, and there's various opportunities to deploy that project, yes, that it looks like that would be moved towards. Now, when that happens and how that happens probably depend on context. I think certainly back to your earlier comment about some of the obstacles with ODOT before, you know, having this now in the plan, that's opportunities that as there's regional discussions or discussions at the Area Commission on Transportation or the ACT, you know, having in the plan, that's the first step. With that one in particular, given that it's on the highway, anything on the highway requires additional ODOT review and approval before construction. And I'd say, in addition, it's a reduction review route, the highway, so there's some additional process that you have to go through before anything can be built. But getting it in the plan, getting the plan adopted is the first step towards that.
Thank you. Any other questions from counselors? Entertain a motion?
So moved as recommended.
I'll second that.
Looks like we have some excitement about this. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Oxberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Absolutely, yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstedt?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve LA 25-01 and
It won't let me cheat.
No matter what, it's faster. So thank you. Since we had a unanimous vote on this ordinance number three for 2025, I can entertain a motion to read it by title only tonight. Or you can make a motion to read it at the next council meeting.
So moved as recommended.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to read ordinance number three for 2025 by title only. Oh, wait, we need to call for a vote. Yeah. I anticipated the vote, sorry.
Counselor Oxberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yep.
President Pro Tem Thorstedt?
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes. Okay, now.
Ordinance Bill number three for 2025, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home Ordinance adopting the 2025 Transportation System Plan as an amendment to and sub-element of the city of Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan and replacing all prior transportation system plans.
Thank you. Now, we can make a motion to have this read by title only at the next council meeting for the third time.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yep.
President Pro Tem Thorstedt?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Oxberger?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to read ordinance number three for 2025 at the May 13th council meeting. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for legislative amendment LA 25-01 and request for council action on ordinance number four. So I'm going to open up this public hearing at 7:30 PM. I will read what I have to read again. So hearing disclosure statement, ORS 197.763. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have a question, please wait until appropriate time and then direct your questions to the council. Please speak one at a time so the recorder knows who is speaking. Declarations by city council. Each counselor cannot answer the question whether they have a personal bias, conflict of interest, or ex parte information. Counselor Richards?
No.
Counselor Bronson?
No.
Counselor Oxberger?
No.
Pro Tem?
No.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Counselor Hagy?
No.
And I do not either. Staff report.
First of all, thank you all for passing the first one. I appreciate it. A lot of work went into that. All right, again, good evening. The second component of the legislative amendment LA 25-01, which is ordinance number four for 2025, includes the 2025 North Sweet Home Area Plan and associated text amendments to Chapter Six of the Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan. The North Sweet Home Area Plan is a sub-element of the broader 2025 Transportation System Plan. These proposed amendments were developed by our consulting team incorporating data and feedback from the Technical Advisory Committee, Public Advisory Committee, City Staff, and Planning Commission. The draft 2025 North Sweet Home Plan is designed to guide the future city decision-making, offer predictability for property owners, and support the coordinated and functional development of the North Sweet Home area. This plan reflects collaborative efforts among city staff, stakeholders, and community members, and is grounded in research analysis and public engagement that identified key transportation system assets and needs. The intent is to adopt the North Sweet Home Area Plan as an amendment to both the 2025 TSP and the existing comprehensive plan. The 2010 Sweet Home Comprehensive Plan outlines transportation goals in alignment with the statewide Planning Goal 12, which is the transportation goal, and includes local objectives to ensure future land development is well-integrated with the multimodal transportation system. The draft 2025 North Sweet Home Area Plan aligns with these goals and expands on them by offering targeted recommendations and improvement projects that support the intent of the comprehensive plan. This plan is proposed for formal adoption as an amendment to the comprehensive plan and as a supporting sub-element of the 2025 TSP, replacing the 2005 version. It includes approval criteria and compliance findings to support adoption through the Type IV legislative procedure. As outlined in the legislative findings provided in your packet, staff has found that the 2025 North Sweet Home Area Plan complies with the Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.116.030, and with Chapters 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 of the Oregon State Planning Goals. Goals 3, 4, and 15 through 19 were determined to not be applicable. On April 3rd, 2025, the Sweet Home Planning Commission held a public hearing and voted to recommend adoption of the North Sweet Home Area Plan to the city council. Based on the legislative findings and the Planning Commission's recommendations, staff recommends that the city council approve legislative amendment LA 25-01, adopt the 2025 North Sweet Home Area Plan, and proceed with the first reading of the ordinance number four for 2025. And again, I will turn it back over to Garth for his second part of the presentation.
All right, thank you, Angela. Adam, if we could jump ahead two slides, let's just take a look at the map. I think that's going to be the most helpful. So as I was alluding to earlier, this is the second part of the plan that was conducted concurrently with the Transportation System Plan update. And so there are definitely elements within the North Sweet Home Area Plan that also make their way into the Transportation System Plan. Namely, future road network and projects needed to support expanding that road network within the North Sweet Home area is directly included in the Transportation System Plan. But the North Sweet Home Area Plan is a bit broader than just that, besides just the transportation improvements. It's the planning process we went through, looking at opportunities and constraints, really focused on a specific area within the community that we refer to as the North Sweet Home area, which is essentially the area that's bounded north of the rail tracks, west over to 18th, south of the river, and then on the east, it kind of slivers up, but essentially makes it out there to Wiley Creek. So it's a large expansive area that we were looking at. We took a look at a few different alternatives, which you may recall when we held a work session early on with both Planning Commission and Council, we took a look at what some of those alternatives looked like, and then ultimately ended up with this recommended configuration based on the input that we had received to date. So one of the other key components within the North Sweet Home Area Plan, in addition to those roadway components, is really kind of the general map or the general plan about the types of uses and locations of the types of uses. And again, this is very high-level zoning level type of stuff. It's not down to the detail of dictating what specific uses would be occurring on specific parcels, but we're just thinking that kind of from a high level in order to support the type of vision that the community has, provide the type of amenities that the community is interested in. This is that roadmap for how that could occur. And so I just wanted to point out a few of the key pieces of it. Number one, it's important to note that, again, being bounded by the rail on the southern edge, that limits connectivity to the area. Also, having the river on the northern edge also limits connectivity to the area. So it's really important to have a transportation framework that provides connectivity to the rest of the community where there are those rail crossings. So 18th, there would be one at 24th, which has been approved through a rail crossing order over at 47th, Clark Mill Road as well. And then there's additional roadway network depicted in there. One of the really key things besides those connections down to Main Street or the highway is east-west connectivity. That's something that's definitely lacking in the area right now. Right now, if you're in the area and you need to go to a different part of the area, you're probably heading down to the highway, heading over, and then going back up. So the hope would be as this area develops in the future, there would be connectivity opportunities, both for driving a motor vehicle, but also opportunities for trails, if you want to walk or bike or push a stroller, whatever you might be doing, or walking the dogs. So that's one key thing. The other key thing to point out then is the types of uses that have been envisioned and talked about for the areas. And so what is showing up here, that yellowish area, kind of the larger expanse along most of the eastern portion, would be a mix of residential uses, you know, additional opportunity for residential development. Within that residential area, you'll see on the northern edges, there's kind of this red crosshatch, which is intended to be a hospitality overlay. And so what comes to fruition there, there's still opportunities and there still could be some variability, but we've heard ideas and interest about things like lodging or other kinds of opportunities for accommodating tourists or other visitors to the city, not just focused on permanent residents. And then down off of 24th, which is important because that's the key connection down to the highway. In purple there, that's shown as industrial or employment area. And so, you know, what that means and what that can look like can be a lot of things. This isn't just kind of the 1950s, 1960s and big industrial warehouses. You could have things like, you could have things like a brewery or things that also might have a mix of things that people might want to go and do and visit and see, not just necessarily somebody going to work in a warehouse and leaving at the end of the day. You could have point-of-sale or other stuff, depending on how it meets your current code. And then And then the other key thing is over on the western edge, that would be more of a mix of of commercial and retail and other types of amenities like that. And so overall, the opportunity here is having those mix of jobs, places to shop, places to live, also helps create another community kind of within the community and give people opportunities on things to do and see. And then the hope being with the improvements identified in the Transportation System Plan, it would also be very easy to get to and from downtown and other areas of the community as well. But I think that is probably all safe for the high level. But again, would be happy to entertain any questions you may have. And then as Angela noted as well, Andrew Parrish, one of the other consultants who worked on this is online and available as well.
Any questions of counselors? Again, not a question, but I just want to say thank you for listening to the voices of the community who you engaged with. I appreciate it. It's reflective of what you've come up with. So thank you for listening to them. Applicants' testimony, I think we just heard that. Testimony in favor? Any testimony in favor? Testimony in opposition? Neutral testimony? Hearing none. I'm closing this public hearing at 7:41 PM. Now, discussion amongst council or questions of counselors?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't know if ODOT's still on the line, but if they are, I'm just looking at this letter that you sent to the city of Sweet Home, and I feel like I want to frame it. So I just want to say thank you so much for engaging our community, like Mayor Coleman said, and being a part of this process and helping us with this plan and hearing our voices. It says, "ODOT looks forward to working with you to implement your TSP as resources allow." So thank you very much for being here for us.
Thank you, Counselor Sanchez, for drawing that out. I was just looking at that again and appreciative of ODOT's input too. Any other counselors, comments, questions? I can entertain a motion?
So moved is recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve LA 25 dash zero one and ordinance number four for 2025 and conduct a first reading. Any discussion? Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Let the record show that we have seven ayes and no nays to approve LA 25 dash zero one and ordinance number four for 2025. We're ready. I'm just going to say I'm relieved that we are passing this plan and I'm grateful for your work, Garth, and your team's work and just dedication sticking with it. It feels like progress and we're just grateful for that, so.
Thank you.
Since we did have a unanimous vote on that first reading, I can entertain a motion to have it read by title only this evening for the second time.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to read ordinance number four by title only for the second time. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yep.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Please let the record show that there are seven ayes and no nays to read ordinance number four for 2025 for the second time by title only.
Ordinance Bill number four for 2025, ordinance number blank, Sweet Home ordinance adopting the 2025 North Sweet Home area plan as an amendment to and sub-element of the city of Sweet Home Transportation System Plan and Comprehensive Plan.
Great. Thank you. We can now make a motion to have the third reading at the next council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to read ordinance number four for 2025 at the May 13th council meeting. Cecily, please call for a vote.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Thorstad?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Augsberger?
Yes.
Counselor Bronson?
Yes.
Counselor Hagy?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yep.
Let the record show that there are seven ayes and no nays to read ordinance number four for 2025 for the third time by title only at the May 13th meeting. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, reports of committees. There are multiple reports from our committees contained in this document. Hopefully you had the opportunity to review them. Grateful for the counselors and their liaisons on these committees and providing these minutes. Any counselor would like to review or we can move on?
I would like to share. The library is holding an open house and all counselors and all members of the public are welcome Wednesday, May 7th from 5 to 7. And they're just encouraged to stop in and learn more about the library and what the library offers our community.
Thank you, and thank you, Garth. Drive safely. Thank you for that, Chelsea, invitation to the open house. Any other counselors who'd like to review the minutes that are contained in here?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to give an update on the Parks Committee. We met last week. There's a couple of important dates coming up. This Saturday is Arbor Day. There's going to be some activities at 2 o'clock at Sankey. So that's this Saturday. Everybody's invited. There's going to be some free hot dogs, some games for kids. Pacific Power is going to be there, kind of giving a presentation on what to kind of look out for as far as like trees and power lines and maybe what should and shouldn't be planted below. Beautification Committee, May 13th, is going to be planting the median. So they're always looking for volunteers, so.
That's great.
So you can reach out to me if anybody out there is available.
Thank you so much. Any other counselors that they would like to review any committee meetings? If not, I will. Are you? Yes, no? Department. Department reports. We have multiple department reports within our packet as well. Are there any department heads that would like to review their reports with us?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would just like to draw your attention to, I'm sure you had an opportunity to look at some of our stats this month. Seventeen percent increase on safety violations. And then license and insurance violations are up also with a 21% rise as well as our traffic stops. Also noteworthy on the person crimes, looks like we have a 32% drop there. And some of our other crimes rose by, like our society crimes, disorderly conduct, stuff like that, rose by 21%. And other organ-specific crimes rose by 22%. So anyway, that's what we had for stats this month, kind of a general overview there. And I just also wanted to thank the community and everyone that showed up for the Child Abuse Awareness March on April 12th. It was just really cool to hear, you know, our speakers present their passion for advocating for child abuse and just making people aware of that. And so I want to thank all of the volunteers. We had a great volunteer crew that showed up and cooked hot dogs and just mingled and interacted with the public. And so we just had a really good time marching around the block there at the PD. So thank you for that. So that's all I have for PD report.
Detective Potter did an excellent job at speaking.
He did, yes. I really appreciated what he had to say.
Any other department heads would like to review the reports?
Madam Mayor, this is not necessarily on my report, but I want to thank Counselor Hagy for bringing up Arbor Day. And one other activity that day, the Park and Tree Committee, they are very involved in invasive species removal, which ivy is one of the biggest ones. So they will actually be doing an ivy poll that morning at 11 o'clock, and then they're moving on. They're very motivated. So they're packing a whole lot into that day. So they will be doing some ivy poll in the Upper Sankey Park besides the Arbor Day, and then they will be setting up for Arbor Day and Kid to Park Day. I would also like to thank you all for voting on the TSP in North Sweet Home area that has been a couple of years in the works and a lot of hard work from our consultants, Michael, Andrew, Garth, their whole team, staff. So I want to show my appreciation for all of you and your participation and your voting on that. So this will help staff move forward as projects come and funding comes. So thank you again for that.
Okay.
One last update, just to add to my report. We did finish the upgrades for the water treatment plant SCADA system. It was successful. It took a little longer than we anticipated. We were hoping within about a day and a half, we would have everything up and running again. It took about two and a half days. In that two and a half days, we lost about 50% of our reservoir capacities. So it kind of gives us a gauge of how long we can operate, and that was kind of winter time. But for the most part, it's all operating well. We have a lot of learning curve with staff. TAG will be coming back out to doing some other kind of cleanup and things that they need to do. So there's still a little bit of work. But the main changeover of all the hardware and software was completed the week of April 7th through 11th, so.
Wonderful. Great news. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is city manager's report.
Yes. I just wanted to let council know that last week was interesting. I was able to put Sweet Home on the map in Columbus, Ohio. Very interesting connections that I had made over the last, I don't know, six months or so on LinkedIn. I ended up connecting with somebody that works for the city of Maricopa in Arizona, and we both have an interest in like AI, ChatGPT, and all of that stuff that's really popular right now. Long story short, I've kind of self-taught myself how to use ChatGPT really well. And he ended up, along with his chief in Maricopa, recommending us to put on a little teaching session for a professional development law enforcement. I can't remember the name of the organization, but they put it on a conference once a year in Columbus, Ohio, and they just wanted a really kind of high level, how is AI being used in law enforcement? And so they ended up paying for his chief, he was from Maricopa also, and myself to go out and just teach a one and a half hour class in Columbus on AI use. I mean, we're talking like simple stuff like editing emails. And I think the big takeaway was analyzing grants. And it was just really neat to be able to take one of their grants in Ohio, throw it into ChatGPT and show them how simple it is to get the information that you need efficiently, quickly, and with help, and making a compelling case for really just how easy it is to use and to save a lot of time, save a lot of money, save a lot of effort and energy. And so at the end of the session, it was interesting, people were really interested in this topic and really just kind of appreciated how AI is being used nowadays within the government sector. So anyway, it was kind of fun to put Sweet Home on the map in the Midwest. Another thing I wanted to bring to council's attention is locally, I was able to put Sweet Home on the map as part of our continued efforts to advocate for Sweet Home's interest in the face of the ongoing Green Peter drawdowns. I was recently invited by state rep Jamie Kate to contribute to their guest column for her weekly legislative updates. You can take a look at what I wrote last week's guest column. But basically, what I wanted to do is just really raise awareness on this issue and communicate the on-the-ground impacts that these federally mandated drawdowns are having on our community, on our infrastructure, our public health systems, and our frontline staff. And so basically, in this piece, I shared a story of what happened inside the water treatment plant when we have these drawdowns, when we have turbidity, how it's damaged our vital infrastructure, and really kind of put us into emergency response mode this last fall. But more importantly, one of the things I wanted to communicate, and I did communicate in this piece, was that Sweet Home, when all of this went down, really, they had no seat at the table, which was frustrating. When decisions were being made about these drawdowns, we didn't have any voice in this. And yet we're bearing the consequences. And so I just wanted council to know, I wanted our community to know that I'm continuing to fight this fight, really not out of opposition to environmental efforts, but really in support of a balanced, inclusive solutions that don't leave rural cities like ours behind. And so I wanted to thank Representative Kate for really providing a forum to allow me to voice our concerns from our community and from our council and from our staff. And so with that, that's my city manager report.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you for representing us well in Columbus, but also continuing the fight and to draw attention to this issue. Really appreciate that. Any questions of counselors to department heads? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report, and I want to congratulate Dale Jenkins. He is one of our local Sweet Home veterans, and he's been a part of the American Legion for over 30 years. And he will be participating in his first ever honor flight on Thursday to DC. So I just want to do a shout out to Dale Jenkins and wish him luck. I also want to say thank you to the Rotary for hosting their annual egg hunt. It was a big event. Over 9,800 eggs were given away in less than three minutes. It was a lot of fun. Students and children enjoyed getting pictures with the Easter Bunny and also just the beautiful playground. And I was thanked by multiple people again and told how Public Works has just done an exceptional job with that park. So many people came up to me thanking me for that, and I just want to pass that along to you, Greg, and to your crew. It's just a great park. I also want to bring your guys' attention to the Army Corps of Engineers. We'll be hosting a town hall for their summer reservoir forecast for the Willamette Valley system. They're hosting two in-person town halls this Friday, April 25th, from 12 to 1:00 in Springfield and 7 to 8:00 PM in Salem. Also this Friday at 2:00 PM at 1501 18th Avenue here in Sweet Home, there is a ribbon cutting for rail bikes that have already been going, but it's basically an official opening of them. And I'd encourage counselors to consider attending some of those events or the Arbor Day event as well. Thank you for those announcements, everybody. And I also want to draw attention to the fact that I don't even know how to explain it. So NOAA is the National, NOAA's National Marine Fisheries Service is proposing a rule change to some definitions that negatively impacted Sweet Home back in nineteen ninety-five. In the Babbitt versus Sweet Home chapter of Communities for a Greater Oregon case that went to the Supreme Court, the rulemaking that they are proposing will go back to the original definition that Sweet Home had actually contested the change of the definition, and that is actually what's caused some harm to our community. It's just something to keep in your mind. There is a place to submit public comment. If you'd like to know more information about that, let me know. Next item on the agenda is council business for the good of the order. Any counselors have anything they'd like to share?
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
There's two things that I want to say thanks for and bring attention to. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been aware, because I've been working in Senator Hayden's office, but I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Tucker and regional partners on behalf of the Sweet Home Fire District, working diligently to release that grant that we needed to do the wildland firefighting mitigation. And so that was really stressful for the Sweet Home Fire District, I believe, and Commissioner Will Tucker helped greatly. So thank you so much for that. I believe they're actively working with that funding now. And then lastly, the twenty-ninth of this month is the last day to register to vote. We have a May twentieth election, school boards, levies, charter review changes. And you can go to Oregonvotes.gov to check your registration and to make sure your address is updated and to make sure you get your ballot. And so I just hope everybody participates in what they want for the future of their school district and their community. So thank you.
Any other counselors have items for the good of the order?
Got one here. Next, on May eighth, Thursday, May eighth, at two thirty, will be the grand opening of the Lynn County Parks RV mega dump site there with four lanes. But the big thing about that, it's going to do, it's going to help take pressure off of the Riverbend system and Sunnyside Park system and Waterloo. All these systems are just beyond capacity. So this is a way and a means to take the pressure off the other parks and take care of the problem.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was just looking on my calendar going, when is it? It is on May eighth, but I forgot the time, so two thirty PM. Thank you for bringing that up. It's another opportunity to thank county commissioners for the work they're doing in the community and helping us out. Any other counselors have items for the good of the order? Hearing none, I'm going to close this meeting out at eight oh two PM. Wow, that was a lot earlier than I expected.
I was going to be like nine.